Good evening, and thank you for being with us tonight for the candidate forum for Alameda County Board of Supervisors District Five. I am Helen Hutchison, and that script just disappeared. Excuse me. I'm with the League of Women Voters of Oakland. This candidate forum is a collaboration among three of the members of the of leagues in Alameda County. The League of Women Voters of Berkeley Albany in Emeryville, the League of Women Voters of Oakland, and the League of Women Voters of Piedmont. The League of Women Voters is a trusted membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We do not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. For decades, we have offered fair and balanced candidate forums. The league participates in advocacy and in voter education. The advocacy arm of the league may take positions on issues such as ballot measures. This forum is presented by the education arm of the league. I'd like to remind everyone that the candidates have both agreed to participate underground rules set for the forum. The league is very proud of our history, of civil discourse, and nonpartisan forums. This is an educational event and not a debate. Before we get started, a few details to review. Microphones are muted for everyone except the candidates and the moderator. The video image will show the candidates, the moderator, and a countdown timer. The candidates will stay on the screen for the entire forum and will mute themselves until it's their turn to speak. The chat function has been turned off for attendees, but if you have questions you want to add, please use the Q and A function at the bottom of the bar. The and we're recording this forum and we'll be posting it via the websites and social media for a broader community to access. The this forum, as I said, is for District Five, the Alameda County Board of Supervisors. We have two candidates running for this office. They are Nikki Fortunato Bass and John Bouters. The questions are have been solicited in advance from the community and from our local leagues. We've screened the questions to ensure that they're fair and unbiased and to avoid duplication and anything inappropriate. Sometimes we edit to combine questions that are of similar subjects. The order of answering the questions will alternate, and each candidate will have one minute to respond to each questions. Each question, excuse me. Keep an eye on the timekeeper screen. The clock will signal the candidates with their time remaining and when their time is up. I'll allow you to briefly finish your sentence, but I may verbally give prompts if you run on beyond the time. If you violate the ground rules, you could be prevented from answering future questions and be muted or removed from the forum. But I don't think that's going to be a problem here tonight. There are no separate rebuttals. The and following the questions, each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement. We randomly selected the order for the candidates, and we have opening statements of two minutes, and we'll start with Nikki Boss. So Nikki, you're you're on.
Well, good evening, everyone, and happy 100th anniversary to the League of Women Voters. I want to thank you for hosting this forum. My name is Nikki Fortunato Bass. I've lived in Oakland and Alameda County for 27 years. I am a working mom, a lifelong organizer, and an effective legislator that gets things done, working in collaboration with our community. I've served as the president of the Oakland City Council, and I am running for supervisor because I believe we have to have a county where everyone has an opportunity to thrive with accessible healthcare, affordable housing, and community safety. I'm the daughter of immigrants who came to this country as healthcare workers seeking a better life, and they instilled in me the values of hard work, determination, and and the importance of giving back to our community. So for two decades, I organized immigrant women garment workers for a fair workplace, raised Oakland's minimum wage, and created good jobs for local residents. For the past six years on the Oakland City Council, I've been bringing our diverse communities together, tackling tough, complex issues, including economic opportunity and housing security, as well as balancing a large budget while maintaining essential city services. Two years ago, I led the passage of our Oakland Measure U, which is our $350 million Affordable Housing Bond. Today, we have 1,170 affordable units in the works for homeless and working families. I've expanded our community safety infrastructure with effective accountable law enforcement, as well as violence prevention and crisis responders. As you may know, the five-person Board of Supervisors oversees a $4.6 billion budget for our public healthcare system and our safety net services. The status quo wasn't working. I'll be the strongest voice for Oakland Berkeley and the district, breaking down silos of our government, to work together and get results. I hope to earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, John Bouters.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for convening this forum this evening. My name is John Bouters. I'm a candidate for the Alameda County Board of Supervisors, District Five. The Alameda County Board of Supervisors is an extremely important office that you're going to vote on this election, which provides $4.5 billion of funding annually to support the social safety net here in Alameda County. The social safety net is critical to the work we do, and it's the work I've been doing for nearly 25 years. As a formerly unhoused LGBT youth, I understand what it means to be priced out of my community, what it means to face discrimination, and what it means to work multiple jobs in order to make my ends meet. I began my career working for the American Red Cross as a disaster relief director, where in that capacity, I worked as an AmeriCorps volunteer and earned a scholarship to go back to school. I ended up getting my degree and working for people who were unhoused. I was an outreach worker for homeless community members in Chicago. I became an eviction defense attorney and represented people facing eviction in public housing, and I've spent the last 10 years working as a victims advocate for victims of violent crime. For the past eight years, I've also been a member of the Emeryville City Council and served three years as the city's mayor, where I've been a champion to address the root causes of inequality in our communities. I championed Emeryville Measure C, a $50 million Affordable Housing Bond, building hundreds of affordable homes in our community. Measure F, which supported our firefighters and police officers, while also addressing early childhood education to ensure that we addressed all the issues of community safety. I've served on multiple regional boards as chair of the Alameda County Transportation Commission and the Bay Area Equality Management District, where I've brought equitable opportunities to environmental justice and transportation choice for other people. I'm committed to supporting Alameda County by bolstering first responder funding, 911 dispatch and response, also ensuring that we have affordable housing for our workers and the community members who are most at risk of being displaced. That's the work I've done for over 20 years, and I'm looking forward to doing that work on behalf of everyone in Alameda County. I look forward to the questions tonight, and I hope to earn your vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. So the first question to you, John. And I think you've answered this to some extent, but you can go ahead. What would be your priorities as county supervisor, District Five?
Thank you for the question. My top three priorities are to address mental health, affordable housing, and homelessness. Mental health is primary function of the county is to serve the people with social services. And currently, we have close to 10,000 people in Alameda County who are unhoused, many of them who are living with chronic mental health or addiction issues. That is not something that we need to continue to do. We need to bring people indoors to shelter. We need to co-locate care and coordinate services in a compassionate way that helps people get connected to get social health and economic outcomes. We can do this if we work closely with cities and with our partners in the community-based organizations organizations in our community to help make sure that we have services available to people. I'll also look to continue the work that was done with Measure A1 at the county to bring additional affordable housing resources to communities to build housing to keep people here. And then beyond that, I think that we have to actually tackle all the root causes of homelessness, which are social inequality and economic opportunity. And those are the primary things I would look to do as county supervisor.
Thank you. Nikki, same question. You're what your top priorities?
So my top priorities are homelessness, housing, healthcare, and safety. We must lead with compassion, care, and solutions that work. Around homelessness, I know firsthand by serving as an Oakland City Council member that we need to make sure the county and all of our cities are working together. We need a true housing-first approach to bring stakeholders together and tackle the issue of having shelter and permanent housing to house people, as we also have wraparound services. Around housing, I will continue to champion tenant protections, as well as create funding to build affordable housing. I serve on the Association of Bay Area Governments, and I will continue to ensure that we seek regional funding to support our housing needs. Around healthcare, we must continue to eliminate health disparities in the in the county and ensure the strength of our public healthcare system, our community healthcare clinics, and our safety providers, our our community healthcare providers. Around safety, we need a holistic approach. Thank you.
Thank you. This next question goes first to Nikki and then to John, and it is a related question, but we're going to talk about the top three budget priorities. And are there programs that you'd cut to provide more funding for those top priority programs? Nikki?
Thank you. Just I want to just make sure I understand the question. The question is twofold. Our top three budget priorities and our programs we would cut?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So my top three budget priorities are affordable housing, as well as ensuring we have a robust healthcare, including mental healthcare system. And then thirdly, making sure that we have a public safety system that is comprehensive and is fully funded. I do believe that first we have to look at whether we have existing funding resources for those programs. Around homelessness, for example, we are hopeful that Measure W will clear the courts and will help fund homelessness, as well as other resources. Around mental health and community safety, I think it's important to look at whether we can divert the $26 million that was scheduled to expand Santa Rita Jail to to provide those services.
Okay, thank you. John, you're next. Your top three budget priorities and anything that you would look at to cut to to boost the funding there?
Thank you. The top three priorities are first, again, mental health, the second, homelessness services, and the third, affordable housing. I don't think that we need to cut programs to do this. We need to optimize the funding that we have. Alameda County has had a balanced budget for many years, but it's balanced on the back at times of all the services that could be delivered by overextending ourselves in the way we administer those programs. We don't do them in a way that actually leads to long-term results. So I would optimize the funding that we have. When voters passed Proposition One in the spring primary, we basically gave direction to how do we spend the Mental Health Services Act funding to prioritize things like permanent supportive housing and other investments that are shown to be health interventions and provide long-term care to people who are high users in our healthcare system. We need to expand those types of programs and better connect the people who use those systems, integrate them, and remove silos that keep people from getting holistic care. That would be my top priority. And then again, as I said earlier, I would fund affordable housing by expanding the bond opportunities, and I would also invest in homeless services to bring people indoors.
Thank you. Next question goes to John first and then to Nikki. What are your thoughts on the current crime trends in the county? And what is the role of the Board of Supervisors in addressing crime outside of the unincorporated areas?
Crime has existed since the beginning of communities, and crime is an unpredictable factor in many ways. Crime trends are very hard to follow and predict. I've worked as a victims advocate for the past 10 years in addressing crime in communities, and I understand that these things are volatile and how they function and operate. What is clear, however, is that crime tends to persist in communities where there's not clear leadership. When there's an absence of leadership and an absence of a willing to take direction on how we're going to move communities towards safety interventions that actually work in intervening and providing a balance in community, then that we actually have a persistence in crime. And so in terms of the crime trends in Alameda County, they're unpredictable, and it's hard to put a pinpoint on what the exact cause of them are. But the reality is that we currently lack leadership that's vocal, articulate, and convincing about how we're going to actually solve these problems. We don't have leaders who are currently bringing real solutions to the table. I've helped work in Emeryville to make Emeryville a safe community, a livable community, and one that does that by attacking both the root causes of crime, while also ensuring people in our communities are safe today and businesses thrive. And that would be the role I would play on the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. Nikki?
So I believe crime is a symptom of poverty, of lack of opportunity, and we do need to address the root causes. I co-led our Oakland Reimagining Public Safety Task Force, and through that task force, we worked on making sure that we can focus police on being effective and accountable and focus their time on serious and violent crime. The way that we did that was we created our macro program of crisis responders in the fire department to take away those low-level, nonviolent calls, some of which are for mental health crisis. We have also been able to expand our violence interruption programs in our neighborhoods, as well as our schools. And that has had a good result, especially as we have implemented fully our ceasefire program in terms of bringing down Oakland's serious Oakland shootings and homicides. The Board of Supervisors can help lead a regional approach to public safety, addressing the balance between law enforcement as well as violence prevention.
Thank you. Next question goes to Nikki and then to John. Many of our younger residents and older residents are forced out of the county because of the high cost of living, including housing costs. What would you do as a county supervisor to ensure that our lower-income populations can afford to continue to live here?
Thanks for that question. I definitely experienced that in my time in Oakland. So one of the things we have to do is make sure that we are creating affordable housing. We are preventing displacement. I believe housing is a human right. The ways that I have done that, which I will take to the county, include preservation of affordable housing. This is a lower-cost way of making sure that tenants, who are often housing insecure, can purchase their homes with land trusts and co-ops. With a program that I helped to create here in Oakland, we've been able to make permanently affordable hundreds of units at a fraction of the cost of construction with an average cost of about $200,000. And that is just one way that I believe that across the county, we can make sure that we are providing more housing stability. Again, tenant protections, preservation of affordable housing, and creating more affordable housing.
Thank you. And John, over to you.
Thank you. I'm somebody who experienced this firsthand. I used to pay $71 a week for a room in a boarding house, and I understand what it's like to not be able to afford housing and wonder where you're going to sleep on a given night. My work when I came to the Emeryville City Council involved passing Emeryville Measure C, as I previously mentioned. And with that housing expenditure plan tied to it, we're producing 90 units of permanent supportive housing for people who are chronically homeless or mentally ill. We helped pass a state law that is going to build an intergenerational project for transition-age youth, aging out of foster care, who do not have adult figures or family in their life, to put them in housing alongside fixed income and low-income seniors, who also need to stay in place in our community. And we're building hundreds of units for workforce housing. Teachers, nurses, firefighters, people who do the jobs that make the Bay Area work don't need to be commuting from hours away. So this is a holistic approach to building housing for everybody that's economically accessible to people of all classes and backgrounds. And that's something that I would bring to the county as a leader and help replicate for people all across the region.
Thank you. Okay, next question goes to John and then to Nikki. What specific policies would you promote at the county level to transition to renewable energy and away from fossil fuels?
Thank you for the question. So last year, I served on the Ava Community Energy Board, which is our agency that helps provide access to renewable fossil fossil fuel-free fuels for our county. And in that, I was really proud to work closely with the building trades of Alameda County, as well as environmental justice advocates, to pass the work the workforce procurement and production policy that we have there, so that all the new renewable energy that we're producing for users in Alameda County is produced with good, union-labor-paying jobs, as well as working alongside environmental justice advocates to ensure that it's done in places that are not going to harm the environment or exacerbate existing climate action goals or problems that we're trying to remediate. I believe that the county supervisor has an important role to play, as we have a seat on that board, in helping ensure that we transition the whole county to a fossil-fuel-free community. I've served on the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, where I've helped put regulations in place as well to cap refinery emissions. And I've worked very closely at the Transportation Commission to advance climate action goals in the way we deploy transportation resources as well.
Thank you. Nikki?
Thank you. I am proud to be endorsed by environmental justice organizations like Apen Action and Sunrise Movement, as well as several building trades that are involved in our energy system. And I believe I have the ability to work with all of our stakeholders to transition into a cleaner, greener economy. On the Oakland City Council, I co-authored the policy for all electric buildings in all of our new construction. I also have been working to implement our Equitable Climate Action Plan, where we are getting more EV charging stations, for example, across the city. When we look at becoming a fossil-free community and reducing our greenhouse gas reductions, transit, as well as building infrastructure, are those largest contributors to greenhouse gas emissions. And so we have to make sure we're partnering with the federal government to convert our transportation system into clean energy, as well as our buildings. And there's great work that we're doing together with the Port of Oakland as well.
Thank you. Next question goes to Nikki and then to John. And this is going to be repetitive, but hopefully you can expand on what you've said in the past. But so, given that the county's core function is in providing social services, what is a policy that you would implement to improve the social services provided to county residents?
I appreciate that question. For eight years, early childhood providers have been fighting to make sure that there is a dedicated funding stream to support making sure that parents and families are able to have the childcare that they need. Measure C finally cleared the courts, and so the county is going through a plan to make sure that we are spending those resources wisely. I do believe that the implementation of that is incredibly important because so many parents and others really scramble for childcare. And so that is an opportunity to create a more robust early childhood system whereby we're not only providing childcare, we're actually creating a new workforce pipeline into those jobs and generating more economic opportunity for people who can provide that care, as well as making sure our children have an early opportunity to learn and be ready for school.
Thanks. And John?
Thanks. I would work to braid the funding streams that serve the mental health community needs. So we currently have a very fractured mental health system that doesn't really serve the needs of people. And as a result of that, the state has enacted a number of policies aimed at giving counties greater authority. Care courts are going to come online later this year in Alameda County. It's an opportunity for people with serious mental illness who are resistant, who are not receiving care, to be moved into a place where they get care for their unmet needs. But on top of that, we need to enact other things, like diversion programs, to keep people who have very serious mental health needs out of the Santa Rita Jail and in places where they actually can get care. Over 70 people have died in the custody of the Santa Rita Jail, and that's largely due to the fact that they're not getting their mental health needs met. I also think that we could be serving kids better. We have a lot of children in the foster care system who develop behavioral and other trauma-related problems. Because we don't actually leverage juvenile mental health funds correctly, we should be using the CalAim dollars and other resources that we currently aren't using to bring money into the county to serve people who are currently being unserved with the the needs they have.
Thank you. Next question goes to John and then to Nikki. Do you support accelerated incorporation of the unincorporated areas in the county in order to give the residents more of a voice and reduce the burden on county government? Why or why not?
I support a process that allows the residents to make self-determination for themselves. I do think that the LAFCO process for incorporation in California has become so cumbersome and burdensome that it has really discouraged a lot of unincorporated parts of the county, as well as around the state, from seeking incorporation in the way that we used to see it in the past. So I think one of the things that the Board of Supervisors can and should do is they should look for ways to assist in that process for a community that wants to incorporate. Castro Valley is a great example of a community that has looked in the past to doing so. And one of the challenges they have is simply the feasibility analysis. We should be helping by funding that. We should help them finance the process towards self-sufficiency and independence, if they want to do that. And we should support them in that way. I don't wish to project upon any community their desire to be part of the county or be an incorporated an incorporated city on their own. But I do believe that the county serves an important role in helping communities towards self-determination, and I would support financing opportunities for them to do that if that's what they wanted.
Thank you. Nikki?
So I would support making sure that our unincorporated communities have a real voice in determining their own future. I think it's important to make sure that we have an assessment of how equitable our services are provided to the unincorporated areas. I think it's important to note that the unincorporated areas have been advocating for tenant protections that are similar to the protections like just cause eviction that other parts of the county have. And the supervisors has been delaying that vote. So I would want to first make sure that we're looking at how does the current Board of Supervisors equitably serve our unincorporated areas, equitably give voice to our unincorporated areas, and also make sure that we're listening and providing ample opportunity without any any barriers to listen and hear if any of our communities want to accelerate incorporation.
Thank you. Next question to Nikki and then to John. AB 1185, which took effect in 2021, gave counties the authority to establish civilian oversight boards to assist the supervisors in providing oversight of sheriffs. What is happening in Alameda County, and what would you support for Alameda County?
So I think it's good news that the Board of Supervisors took the first step in terms of approving an independent sheriff oversight board. There is still a process that needs to be followed in terms of meeting and conferring with the deputy sheriffs' unions and the workers who would be impacted. You know, coming from Oakland and having the experience of our independent police commission, I'm fully supportive of having independent oversight. You know, especially when you consider that over 70 people have died in Santa Rita Jail. That is one of the key things that I believe the reimagining adult justice process and other advocates have pointed out. There needs to be a mental, a professional mental health response to those in our jail who are experiencing mental health crisis. There also needs to be accountability with the contractors who are providing healthcare in our in our jail system. So I hope that that process will be expeditious. I hope that the process for selecting commissioners will also be expeditious, involving people who have experience in the criminal legal system.
Thank you. John?
Thank you for the question. Assembly Bill 1185 was an important piece of legislation, and I support transparency at all levels of government. I think it's really important with the deaths that we've had at Santa Rita Jail and questions about the provision and procurement of health services within the jail, that we have independent oversight. So I've been supportive of, and I applaud the Board of Supervisors for moving forward with independent oversight. I believe that can be done in a healthy and holistic way, and that we should have professionals and stakeholders from all the various components of what services people receive, both prior to, during, and when they leave the jail, as part of the holistic continuum of people who will provide oversight to that body. I believe that the decision to have an independent inspector general was a good one, somebody who can make recommendations and have the board make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. And I also believe that the independent council, I think there's some questions about how that's going to interface with the legal counsel at the Board of Supervisors, but I trust that that will be worked on through the deliberative process to achieve an outcome that works best for everybody.
Thank you. Next question to John and then to Nikki. Do you support ranked choice voting? And would you advocate for ranked choice voting for Alameda County Supervisor races and other races in the county? Why or why not?
So I do support ranked choice voting. I support ranked choice voting because it reduces costs to the taxpayer. It reduces time and process. My opponent and I are in this race because there is no ranked choice voting, and we didn't have the opportunity to complete this election in March. That comes at a huge cost. Both of us are probably expending a significant amount of time and money on campaigns. And taxpayers benefit from ranked choice voting in elections when they can make choices that allow them to prioritize who they want in one ballot. I understand there's a lot of concern and confusion about ranked choice voting, and there's been a lot of information about it that would seek to condemn ranked choice voting. I think what needs to happen is an aggressive campaign to educate people about ranked choice voting, to help explain the benefits of it, and to help talk about why it benefits marginalized community members in particular, who want to ensure that they have a candidate that makes it into the race farther to ensure equitable representation of people and communities that have historically been underrepresented. So I do support that, and I would support that coming to Alameda County as a path forward to equitable representation.
Thank you. Nikki?
Yes, I do support ranked choice voting. As an Oakland resident for 27 years, I've participated in ranked choice voting. I similarly think that for the county races, it would provide voters, you know, much more time to get to know the candidates and ability to really decide how to rank us. And it saves a lot of taxpayer money, as well as funding in general. It's a much more efficient, cost-effective system. And I think for candidates, it really allows us more time to be out there, talking to voters, engaging voters, and listening, as well as developing out our plans together with voters.
Thank you. Okay, so then this next question is going to go to Nikki first and then to John. And you've both mentioned Santa Rita Jail. This is dealing with Santa Rita. So a not insignificant port a not insignificant portion of the population in Santa Rita jail are suffering from mental illness. What policies would you implement to provide alternatives to jail for those with mental health problems? And what do you see as the role of the Board of Supervisors in improving healthcare and overall conditions in the jail?
So this is a really important question, and I believe, as I said earlier, that the response to mental health crisis should be a professional mental health response. And I think the frustration that uh, family members who've lost loved ones have is that across the, the continuum of care, we don't have enough prevention uh, to, to detect things early on. We don't have enough interventions like um, uh, crisis uh, care systems. And we also don't have enough care outside of our jail system. Again, we have the opportunity to make sure that we are taking um, you know, salary savings, uh, un, um, you know, unfilled vacancy, uh, vacancy savings to better uh, provide care in our um, mental health system. And you know, that's one of the things that I think is really important, making sure that uh, we have the whole continuum of prevention, intervention, and care for people who are seriously mentally ill.
Thank you. John?
Could you repeat the full question, please?
Sure, not, no problem. So a not insignificant portion of the population in Santa Rita jail are suffering from mental illness. What policies would you implement to provide alternatives to jail for those with mental health problems? And what do you see as the role of the Board of Supervisors in improving healthcare and overall conditions in the jail?
Thank you. Uh, so I believe that we have a very important role to play in addressing mental health in the jail. The reimagining adult justice initiative that the county began a number of years ago and has left on its shelf includes a number of elements for how we address various ways to address racial inequality in our jails. One of them, element 12 is diversion. Um, I've worked very closely with the state legislature over the years to help pass pilot programs for law enforcement assisted diversion, where people who are essentially um, picked up for minor offenses largely due to a mental health issue are diverted away from the jail and into care. The problem we have in Alameda County is that our care system, as I've mentioned before, is fractured. And so even when people leave the jail, they're not connected continuously to their care provider. They lose, they have gaps in care that often result in relapses or recidivism and returning to jails. So in terms of what the County Board of Supervisors should do as policy, I think one of them is to reopen the negotiations in a decision called BABU, where there's supposed to be a hundred million dollars invested in the jail for mental health. I think that should be invested out of the jail in a diversion program for mental health, because we shouldn't expect sheriff's deputies to be mental health providers.
Thank you. Um, next question to John first and then to Nikki. The Board of Supervisors recently committed to developing a code of ethics for themselves. What process do you think they should use for this? And what should they take into account as they develop a code of ethics?
Um, well, in the city of Emeryville, we've also developed a code of ethics and initiative I led in our city that we adopted last fall. And in that process, we did a number of things. We solicited community stakeholder input. We had committee hearings on that, and we also tasked our staff with coming back with examples of how other communities similar to ours had gone through that process. Um, I believe those are the starting points for any good process to develop a code of ethics. I think there should be an independent panel of people similar to what you've heard in other questions we've answered this evening, who give recommendations on how to um, make that possible and what are the best practices. Um, and I think that there should be a panel of people who get to publicly talk about um, how we, how we employ those things in our community. Um, I noticed that the clock is not running, and so I'm going to, as a matter of fairness to my opponent, stop uh, speaking in about 10 seconds. But I'm going to just simply add that I think that a code of ethics is really important to not just providing transparency to our community, but meaningful accountability um, to our community to ensure that our elected leaders are held to a standard um, which people can trust and rely on.
Thank you, and thank you for noting about the timer. Um, Nikki, about the code of ethics.
Thank you. So um, Oakland's Council Rules of Procedure has a code of conduct um, and a censure policy. It was developed before I came onto the council. However, as council president, I have been working to update those policies. Um, this is about how we are ethical, how we are accountable and responsive to our constituents. Um, we have also added some additional information in our code of conduct that's about making sure that we are doing our due diligence as legislators, doing our homework, uh, so to speak. So I think there's a lot of important information that could be in the code uh, in regards to being accountable and ethical as well as, you know, effective legislators. It's a great idea to make sure we're looking at other codes, that it's a public process, uh, that um, ethics and other um, experts are consulted. Uh, and more than anything, I think it's important to have buy-in both from the board members themselves as well as the public.
Thank you. Okay, next question to Nikki and then to John. Um, what is your opinion about vacancy control for residential properties? And how could the Board of Supervisors make an impact on reducing the number of vacant residential properties in the county?
So I do support vacancy control. I think this is one more tool to help ensure that we have housing affordability and housing security. Um, we hear um, often about how somebody leaves an apartment and the rent goes up exponentially and driving, it drives up our, our housing costs. So I think it's again, one tool to make sure we have housing stability. Um, in terms of what um, the board could do in terms of vacant uh, properties, I think this is a really important question. Uh, in Oakland, we have a vacant uh, parcel tax. Um, that is something that could be looked at in terms of making sure that there are some incentives for property owners to rent their spaces. Um, you know, it's also possible to uh, make sure that we are doing everything we can to address blight and other things that might be in the way of property owners uh, renting out their spaces.
Um, thank you. And John?
Thank you. Um, I believe that any, any type of regulation we put on housing and housing production and availability needs to be very carefully crafted. So vacancy control can be a useful tool, but it really requires us to examine all the circumstances for which vacancy may occur. Um, so in my work doing tenant advocacy and landlord tenant protection issues, um, we encounter different reasons why units could be vacant at times. Some, sometimes the person in the, the owner of the household is um, unable to manage the property and is in the process of trying to sell the property or turn that property over to other family members. Um, sometimes you have a property owner who owns hundreds of units and is actually trying to um, change market conditions in a smaller community by keeping some of them off the market or unavailable. Um, so the circumstances for which a unit is vacant are really important to discussing vacancy control. So as a general principle, I support a discussion on that, and I think that it comes down to the details of how we do that so that we don't take away property or overburden mom and pop landlords who are trying to make um, you know, live on a fixed income with rental assistance um, from rental income, um, but also not allowing speculative interest to take hold.
Thank you. Um, next question to John and then to Nikki. Um, how would you in office or your office seek to improve reentry program outcomes for the formerly, formerly incarcerated in the county? What do you think is working well and what do you think needs to be improved?
Thank you for this question. Um, so I once served on the Board of State and Community Corrections Executive Steering Committee, um, where I worked on requests for proposals to give grant funding to counties for programs that fund reentry, um, recidivism reduction programs, et cetera. I think one of the most important sources of uh, revenue for this is AB 109 funding. This is funding that goes to services for people who are coming out of or currently in county jails. And one of the biggest challenges we see here in, in the East Bay is that many people return and they don't have access to housing or employment. We need to bring employment programs and good wages, good healthcare programs um, and benefits into the jails and give people training there. We can't just expect people to come out improved when their socioeconomic situation hasn't changed. And on the outside, we need to have opportunities for them to go to work, but also for places to live. We have Rising Sun Opportunities here in Emeryville, a real important partner I'm proud of. Uh, but one of the challenges they have is many of the people who come into their program from Santa Rita sleep in their cars because they don't have a place to live. So we need to use AB 109 funding both for services to do job training, but also to provide housing to people on reentry.
Thank you. And Nikki?
I appreciate this question. I have a long history of working with the formerly incarcerated community. And in about uh, 2012, uh, worked on a fair chance hiring program for uh, jobs on the redevelopment of the old army base. Uh, on the Oakland City Council in about 2020, um, I also worked with a coalition of organizations to ensure that Oakland had a fair chance housing policy. Um, I know a lot of folks who have been involved in the criminal legal system, and when they come back into the community, they need access to housing, number one. And so we have to make sure that our fair chance housing laws, including uh, the one that the county passed last year, are actually working. And they also need a job. And so making sure that we are connecting with organizations uh, to provide job training and to actually make sure at the end of that job training, there's a job at the end. Um, so construction is one place where I know a lot of that training uh, exists, and my time is up.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, here's a, a short question with, that's a big topic. So to Nikki first and then to John. How do you propose to alleviate hunger in the county?
So uh, this is a great question. It is one of the uh, most important questions that I think the county uh, can help address through our safety net services. You know, through uh, COVID, I think we saw some of the opportunity for improving food security. And a lot of that um, I was engaged in through my broad community uh, network. And those were programs during COVID to make sure that trusted community organizations were able to uh, deliver food, uh, to make sure that senior programs were also able to deliver food. Um, at the end of the day, it's also about making sure that there are living wages for everyone. And, you know, I think it's really important, especially as our public healthcare system, to make sure that our network of healthcare providers are earning a living wage. And to make sure that we partner with our healthcare unions, um, our educational institutions to create a more robust pipeline into those jobs that is also well-paid.
Thank you. And John?
Thank you. I've worked on food security for a very long, long time, and I currently volunteer and have for years at the Emeryville Citizens Assistance Program, where they serve over 200,000 meals a year to people who are hungry across Alameda County. The need for food security is so great right now. And as was mentioned, we experienced during COVID a really high spike in food insecurity. And many people who had not previously been insecure experienced it for the first time. One of the biggest challenges we have with food and security issues is that we currently have a lot of waste. Um, there's a lot of work being done to reduce waste in the food process and delivery system. And large grocery stores around the country get benefits in terms of pricing for the procurement of foods and supplies over small grocery stores and community grocers who um, are cooperatives or other small pro, process and food process servers who otherwise would serve communities at a more affordable price. We need to be at the forefront of helping support the Alameda County Food Bank and other food banks around the county get access by helping subsidize their access to food to feed people who are most in need, because food is nutrition and nutrition is part of healthcare.
Thank you. Um, this next question to John and then to Nikki. With so many residents commuting outside of the county to go to work, how can the county adequately, adequately provide social services? And is there a role for the Board of Supervisors in increasing the number of, numbers in our local workforce? Two-part there.
Can you repeat the question? I thought it was a
So yeah, it, 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 so it has to do with providing social services to people who commute outside the county. And then what is, is there a role for the Board of Supervisors in actually increasing the people who stay in the county? So it, it's, it, it is. So let's, let's just do the, the, how can the county provide the social services to people who are commuting?
Commuting to outside of the county.
Outside of the county, yeah. Let's leave it there.
Okay, so I mean, a lot of people right now are, thank you. A lot of people right now are commuting across the mega region. More people than ever are commuting trips of 60 to 90 minutes or more. And most of those people are poor people. They're people who are on lower incomes. They can't afford housing in the center of the Bay Area, and so they're forced to travel long distances to jobs that allow them to afford where they do live. Um, so there is a breakdown in the current system in terms of where people are during their day and where they live at home. Um, this is part of the regional approach. The Bay Area has nine counties. It has 100 cities. And it's been fractured for a very long time in the delivery of services. And this requires partnership across county lines. Santa Clara, Contra Costa, San Francisco counties all provide services, and we all have funding that's very siloed. We need to look at this the same way we look at infrastructure planning. We need to have a social services system that meets people where they are, is holistic and person-oriented, and provides care to people regardless of where they are. That requires us bridging divides that we currently exist and partnering in ways that we currently don't. Um, that's a very big challenge to, to overcome, uh, but I, I understand and am ready to do that work.
Thank you. And Nikki?
Sure, um, you know, this is a, a really tough issue because so many people have been pushed and priced out of our cities here in Alameda County, and they are commuting across county boundaries uh, to uh, make sure that they've uh, got a job to put food on the table, oftentimes multiple jobs. And so if we are going to make sure that we are serving uh, and providing services to our residents who might be working in another county, um, I think it's important to make sure that our services are accessible, uh, making sure that we um, look at what our hours are, look at what our um, um, our telecommuting uh, appointments might be. And at the end of the day, I think there's a larger problem here, which is displacement. And so many people getting pushed and priced out, as I said. And we need to have a regional approach as a county to our housing and jobs uh, balance to make sure that more people can stay in their actual homes, uh, the places where they grew up.
Thank you. Um, the next question goes to Nikki and then to John. So the whole county votes on taxes that are paid only by the residents of the unincorporated areas. An example would be the utility user tax extension that we voted on in 2020. It was Measure V at that time. Would you pursue, pursue legislation that restricted such votes only to those who, who would be paying the taxes? So those in the unincorporated areas.
So I appreciate this question. Uh, you know, the Oakland City Council did put onto our ballot a wildfire measure, which is only going to be voted upon by uh, those in our wildfire zone. Uh, and it would also benefit those in our wildfire zone. I think uh, for us, that makes sense. You know, again, as a new supervisor, I would make sure that I am spending time with folks in the unincorporated areas uh, to listen, to learn, make sure I understand their needs. And uh, this is definitely an issue that I would want to make sure that I am getting input from everyone in the county, especially those in the unincorporated areas, to make sure that there's equity in how our services are delivered and equity in how our services are paid for.
Thank you. And John?
Thank you. As somebody who grew up in a rural and unincorporated county, relied on a county sheriff, relied on county utilities and didn't have sidewalks and had well water, I fully appreciate this question and the question coming from people who are not in District 5, but are still members of our county. It's a fairness question. This is a fairness question. Whether people who live in a region that um, is governed by the Board of Supervisors and pays taxes to the board and the county in order to receive services in return should have their service level and other um, things that are procured and provided to them decided by people outside of that area. Um, I think it's a fairness question. And so personally, I don't believe that we should have countywide voting on taxes that will only be implemented and um, enacted against people in the unincorporated part of the county. Um, if they are under county governance, I think they should be able to vote for that, and the County Board of Supervisors should work closely with them. I've spent time in Fairview and Stanley Lorenzo and uh, Castro Valley talking to voters out there and residents out there about their service needs, and I know that they very much are proud, proud, proud of being part of Alameda County, and we should um, give them the rights that they deserve.
Thank you. And we're now going to move to closing statements, and we'll do them in the reverse order. So John, you're up for a closing statement, two minutes, and then Nikki.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, it's been a pleasure to join you today, and I appreciate the League of Women Voters for hosting this event and allowing you the opportunity to learn more about both of the candidates. Um, as I mentioned, I'm a candidate who has spent 25 years almost working in nonprofit services, doing the direct service work that the county is supposed to fulfill as its mission every day. I come prepared, ready to do this job, having listened to and provided direct services to people all across the county and other places who rely on the health services system, the homeless and mental health services system, and need affordable housing, access to fair transportation options, and job opportunities to help them survive and be self-sufficient. Um, I'm proud to be endorsed in this race um, by a number of stakeholders in this county. I'm the only candidate in this race supported by our local firefighters, Alameda County, Berkeley, Piedmont. The first responders who have worked with me as a disaster relief director and as a city council member know that I'm the person best prepared to provide for public safety. I'm also supported by folks like Planned Parenthood advocates Marmontay, who believe in reproductive choice and healthcare choices for people. They've given me their sole endorsement in this race. Environmental groups like the Sierra Club, which gave me their Leadership Award and Visionary Award in 2022, have supported me along with 350 Bay Area Action and Run on Climate. People who want to see climate action leaders who will really fulfill the commitment to preserving and protecting our planet. Labor unions like the Carpenters, Teamsters, and the International Labor unions like the Carpenters, Teamsters, and the International Longshoreman and Warehouse Workers also support me in this race. Housing leaders like the Housing Action Coalition support me. And I have civil rights groups like Equality California and the Honor Pack, people who are lifting up marginalized voices and giving representation to people not currently in office. I have the sole endorsement of the East Bay Times. I have Assembly Member Buffy Wicks and Miobanta, leaders of this district, who are supporting me, fierce women who are championing the rights of people at all stages of life and development. And I'm proud to have the endorsement of Supervisor Keith Carson, who's held this seat for 32 years. I have Supervisor Marquez's endorsement, the Alameda County Sheriff Yessenia Sanchez, 11 of the 14 mayors across Alameda County, and the Democratic Clubs of Albany, Berkeley, and Stonewall Democrats and Cal Berkeley Democrats alike. But the most important endorsement I need is yours. And I hope you'll vote for me in honor before November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you. Nikki?
Well, thank you for this forum. As your county supervisor, I'll focus on housing, healthcare, public safety, and economic opportunity. These are the foundations of a fair and just society. I have the experience, values, and vision to lead. And my track record shows I deliver real impactful results. This election is a choice between maintaining the status quo or moving forward with bold progressive leadership that fights for everyone. I'm the candidate with the experience to take on the challenges we face and the commitment to make sure every single voice in Alameda County is heard. I'm endorsed by leaders like Senator Nancy Skinner, Berkeley Mayor Jesse Aragorn, former Oakland Mayor Ella Hugh Harris, and Bart Board Member Latifah Simon, because they know I'm a principled, accountable leader that delivers results. I'll champion healthcare with my broad coalition. I'll ensure the strength of our healthcare system and safety net services and ensure we have a workforce that is well-trained and supported. I'm ready to roll up my sleeves with my endorsers, including the California Nurses Association, former county healthcare directors, as well as State Superintendent of Public Education, Tony Thurman. I'll champion community safety. My approach is a holistic approach, maintaining trained and accountable law enforcement together with the financial investments to attack the root causes of crime and poverty. I will ensure that we have regional collaboration to get guns off our streets as well as make sure that we're increasing access to mental healthcare, community violence prevention programs, as well as fighting human trafficking. I'm asking for your vote because I believe that together we can build a future where everyone in Alameda County has a home, healthcare, and an opportunity to thrive. Let's build a county that works for all of us. Thank you.
So thank you to the candidates for being here. And thank you to everybody for listening. We know that not all of your questions were answered. But if you want to know more about these candidates and what is on your ballot, please go to vote411, the voter information website sponsored by the League of Women Voters. If you have moved or changed your name or want to change your party affiliation since you last registered, you need to reregister. And online registration is available at the Secretary of State's website, sos.ca.gov. Secure and easy. The last day to register to vote online is October 21st. After that, voters may also register to vote at a vote center and then vote provisionally. All California active registered voters will receive a vote-by-mail ballot for the November 5th general election. Ballots will be in the mail starting October 7th. Ballot drop-off locations will be open on October 8th. Vote-by-mail ballots can be returned by mail at a drop-off location at your county voter election site or at a vote center. Vote centers will be open for early in-person voting beginning October 26th. Vote-by-mail ballots must be postmarked on or before Election Day and then received by November 12th. Thank you again to the candidates for participating this evening. And thank you for taking time to become an educated voter. We also thank the many volunteers who helped make this happen. We welcome any and all of you to join us in the League of Women Voters in doing the hands-on work to empower voters and defend democracy. Please make sure you vote by November 5th. Thank you very much. Good night.
Have a good night.
Good night.